Welcome to all of our high school students that are present today in this conversation. I want to thank you for taking the time, for joining us, and for being part of this dialogue. Our goal today is to keep you as well informed as possible. Si hay algún estudiante que no habla inglés y necesita que yo le informe alguna parte de la presentación hoy en español, por favor incluyan en la preguntas que necesitan traducción de la información si están aquí y no hablan inglés. Solamente para los estudiantes porque este es un evento solo de estudiantes, no de adultos. I was just translating that if anyone needed Spanish elements of the presentation in Spanish, because we have students that don't speak English, so please let me know. But this forum is mainly focused for students, not adults. So we asked that if any questions are added to the Q and A, that they only come from students, not from adults. To begin, I just want to thank all of the high schools students, as I said, for joining us in this conversation. The same way that we provided updates to your parents, community members, and many others about reopening, we thought it would be important to have you as part of the conversation because we want you to understand what some of the changes are and what this new experience is going to look like in this new academic school year for you as well as other adults that are going to be supporting you. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Dr. Alexandra Estrella. I am the new superintendent of Norwalk Public Schools. I usually go by Alex and I'm hoping to get to know you soon as we start school September 8. I'm looking forward to visiting all of the schools and having an opportunity to say hello as we welcome you to the new academic school year. This session is approximately 45 minutes. I'm going to share my screen so that we can walk you through some of the pieces that we think are important for you to know as students coming in to the schools September 8. So the first thing I'm gonna do is walk you to the day in the life of a student that is in person. And I'm then gonna walk you through the day in the life of a student that is virtual. But it's also going to be a similar experience because we are in a hybrid for those students that for all of us who will be transitioning from in-person to remote learning throughout the week. So we're gonna start the day off with Malik, a ninth grade student in a general class. And Malik is going to board the bus early in the morning to be in school by 8:30. I'm gonna have Sandra Faheyles and Dr. Costanzo speak a little bit about what getting on the bus will look like this year, which is very different than what you have been experiencing in the past.
Hey, everybody. My name is Sandra Faheyes and some people may know me as Mrs. Fahey. I actually think that some of my Brookside students are going to be freshmen this year. So there might be some of you guys in the audience and I can't wait to see you guys in your new high school settings. And right now, I'm just going to talk to you guys about getting on the school bus. So obviously, it's going to look a little bit different. There's only going to be half of you guys going to school at any one time. So the buses are not going to be as full as they were last year. In addition to that, everyone's...
I just want you to know that they're saying that they're having a hard time hearing us. So I think we might have to speak up. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So let me try that again. So half of you guys will be going to school and the other half will be participating virtually. So because of that, the buses are going to be less full. In addition to that, you're gonna be wearing a mask as you enter the bus. So as you're approaching your bus stop, you should be wearing your mask because you just want to make sure that your mask is on at all times, especially because there might be other students at the bus stop. And you want to give somebody that's in front of you some distancing so that you guys are not all piling up waiting to get into the bus. The bus will also board from the back to the front. You're gonna have an assigned seat. And you will notice that if you're one of the first kids that gets on the bus, that your seats will be closer to the back. This prevents us from having a lot of people sitting in the front as kids are going down the aisle to find their seat. So that's really the bus. You'll have an assigned seat. So those of you guys that used to get sort of like courtesy bus, which means you probably hopped on the bus even though it wasn't necessarily your bus, you will no longer be able to do that because you are actually getting an assigned seat. And we have to make sure that we're keeping our bus numbers down. So you will notice that somebody will be on the bus to help remind you of these safety features.
Thank you. Then, once you are safely on the bus, you will then transition to your school at approximately 8:30. And once you arrive, you will immediately report to your first block, which at that point, you will engage in your coursework between Block 1 and Block 2. Within those blocks, you're going to have an opportunity to have a break, a mask break, to make sure that you can have some release time because I know wearing a mask is not easy. So we wanted to make sure that you had opportunities for break. You will then transition into advisory around 11:17 to 11:37. And remember, this is just an example. Your schedule might look a little different depending on your coursework and how the schedule fluctuates for you, given your particular course needs. Then around 11:47 and 12:17, you will go and have your lunch, which will give you another opportunity for a mask break because you will take off your mask while you're eating. And then you will transition to Block 3 and 4. At the end of Block 4, at around 3:15, either you'll get on the bus to go home or you will transition to after-school activities, either extracurricular activities, sports, and other activities. During the after-school activities, you will probably be joined by students that might be learning virtually for that day, but will be coming back to school to engage in after-school activities. Now, if you are in a distance learning model, either 100% of the time or on a day that you are learning remotely, you will start your day off with breakfast. At around 8:30, you will log into your computer, get your space ready to get started in your learning. Then, at around 8:30, you will transition immediately to Block 1 as well as move towards Block 2 because you'll have the early morning classes between 8:30 and 11:17. Then you will have your advisory group at 11:17 to 11:37, which will then follow by Malik. For instance, in this case, Malik will have lunch at 11:37 to 12:17. One of the things I want you to notice, though, is that when students are having mask breaks, you'll have a technology break, right? So that gives you an opportunity to get off the screen, take a break, walk around, do what you need to do. And then, after lunch, transition into Blocks 3 and 4. You will have in-between tech breaks to help you alleviate and have some time to move around and do other things. And then, at around 3:15, your school day ends. For a high school, at that time, you would then either get on the bus or find a way to come to the school to engage in your sports and extracurricular activities. If you are not participating in any of those pieces, then obviously you would stay home or if your parents have other things for you to do, you will do those things after 3:15 because your day would be concluded. Now, we have Mr. Scott Herwitz with us. Scott, do you want to speak a little bit about the schedule for us?
Sure, Dr. Estrella and everybody else. Hope everybody's doing well and looking forward to seeing you next week. I did just send out something to all students and to all families that reflects the schedule and the way it's gonna work. And just, you know, for clarification, we're gonna continue to have A days and B days like we've always had in our rotating block schedule. But then each student has been assigned to a group of students. So I think Alpha and Beta are the groups. And depending on what your last name is, you've been assigned to one of these two groups. And then what will happen is each group of students will come in to school for two days in a row. So you'll do your A-day schedule, your B-day schedule. And then for the following two days, you'll be remote learning. And the group that had been remote learning for the first two days would then come into school and do two days of in-person learning. So there's a calendar that kind of explains to you which day, which group is gonna be in on which days. And that's just to help everybody know, you know, to clarify that because I think that's been a big question on the minds of students.
Thank you very much. I don't know, Ralph, if Reginald is with us or any of the other... Julie and... Oh my God, I lost her name.
Karen.
Karen is with us. I don't know if they want to add anything that they would like to highlight around the schedule and their program.
I currently don't see them, but if you guys are in here, please raise your hand so I can...
Okay. So if you see them later on, let me know and we can add them to the conversation. Thank you so much, Scott, for that update. And this is just an example of what the different months will look like. But as your principal stated, you will get this information if you haven't done so already so that you understand the expectation. I just want to go over some of the highlights in terms of the day in the life in more detail. I'm gonna turn it over to Sandra and to Frank to speak to some of the factors that we put in place in the classroom that are gonna be really important for you to know about as we transition into this new year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Estrella. So as you've heard already, your classrooms in your school will be operating at a much, much lower density of students. Right off the bat, 50% of students will not be in the building at any one time. And so it's gonna look a lot different in your classroom, in hallways. Classrooms are gonna be operating at 50% less. So a classroom of 24 students, you're gonna expect to see about 12 or so students. Also, keep in mind that about 27% of high school families that completed the survey opted for full remote. So the 50% we're talking about is already from a lower number of total students. Desks are gonna be separated by six feet or more. Dining is gonna look a little bit different at the high school level than it has in the past at the high school level and then also from what you would expect at any point in the past. So incoming ninth graders, you don't really have a whole lot to compare it to. Excuse me, you haven't been in a high school before. But you're gonna find that there are four or five different satellite areas for which there'll be a cart, there'll be four or five menus, menu items that you can choose from. You'll be able to select that meal and eat that meal either in that little satellite area around that cart, a large cart, or there'll be some areas inside the cafeteria and outside the cafeteria. Even outside the school, I believe that both of the campuses now will have some option for outdoor dining. And so you'll have these options available to you. And it's gonna transform different from what you've experienced in the past. If you have been in high school before, you won't be waiting in lines. You won't be going through, seeing the cashier and checking out the way you have in the past. Transitions will be different in a few ways. There'll be far fewer students in the hallways as you're passing. And the passing time, you're accustomed to five minutes to get from one class to another. While that will still be the case, everybody won't be given that same five minutes to go from their current class to the next class. The window for transitions is being expanded to 10 to 15 minutes. So while you'll still be expected to get to your next class in five minutes, that will be part of a three-part phase for which students will be going from one class to the other. That's gonna further reduce the number of minutes or the number of people in the hallway at any one time. There'll be signage on the floors and the hallways so that people are going in one direction. And it's gonna look and feel a whole lot different and for good cause because we're looking to keep you healthy and safe throughout the year.
Thank you. And some students are asking when they will receive their programs. Scott, would you like to answer that question?
Sure. Schedules are being finalized right now. Like, there's still some little tweaks that are going on to make sure everyone's fully scheduled. And I think those will be made live on Power School, either tomorrow or maybe Thursday. I can't remember the exact date, but students will know their exact schedules by the end of this week, for sure.
Scott, I believe it's Thursday, so...
Thanks, Ralph. Thursday, then.
And the other question is around Power School. Ralph, when will Power School be activated?
On Thursday. That's when you'll be able to see their schedules. It's the same thing.
Okay, thank you. And the other question, Frank and Sandra, is will buses be available for those who need to get to and after-school activities for those that are in distance learning?
Yes, my understanding is that there would be some transportation provided for students who are remote on those days to participate in the after-school athletic or band activity that might be occurring that afternoon.
Thank you. So that gives you kind of a sense of some of the safety parameters that we're putting in place as well as what a day in the life for a student will look like that I think is essential in terms of the work we need to do. I also want to talk to you a little bit about the masks and what are the expectations around masks because I know that's one of the things that we have to make sure we practice and keep in place to keep us all safe. I'm going to unshare my screen right now and I'm going to ask my team to put on their masks. And I'm going to ask you to raise your hand or thumbs up if you believe the person that I name has an appropriate mask. We're gonna start with Dr. Gervage, Yvette Gervage. Can you unmute yourself a bit and say something so that you come to the front of the screen?
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to see you.
So do you believe that Ms. Gervage is wearing a mask that is appropriate for school? If you believe that she is, do a thumbs up or raise your hand. And Ralph, I'm gonna need your help to see your account. How are we looking here? Do you believe that she's wearing the appropriate mask? If you believe so, raise your hand or thumbs up.
Hand raising's going up. So we've got, out of 186, we've got 25, 29, 33. It's increasing quite a bit.
Okay, give it another second. Okay, what number are we at?
We have about 49 hands up.
So for those 49 students, you are correct. Yvette's mask is appropriate for school. And one of the reasons why, like, you will see some personnel utilizing the ones with the clear component is because it's important, especially for younger children, that they can see their teachers' faces. You might not see that as much at the high school level because you're much older and you would understand, but younger children might not. So she's wearing an appropriate mask. Now, we have one of our board members as a panelist today wearing a mask, Ms. Diana Caprio. Let's have, let's look at her. Diana, can you unmute yourself and say something? Say hello to us.
Hi, everybody.
So let's take a look at Diana's mask. Is Diana wearing an appropriate mask that we can utilize in school? If you believe she does, thumbs up or hands up. How are we doing over there, Ralph?
We're getting a lot of hands up. We're already well above Mrs. Gervage. We're at 75.
Interesting. So Diana, our current model, yes, is wearing an appropriate mask. So thumbs up to Diana. Now we have Dr. Costanzo. You see, I can't even say it right now. Can you please say something, Dr. Costanzo, so that they can see you on the larger screen?
My mask is the best mask.
So I want you to be a thumbs up, hands up, if you believe Dr. Costanzo is wearing an appropriate mask that you can wear in school. So Ralph, how are we doing here?
We've got about 32, 33 people that answered positively. 34, 35. It's the lowest amount so far.
Okay. So actually, Dr. Costanzo is wearing a mask that is a no-no. And we're gonna have our health expert, Ms. Joanne Molinowski, tell us why that mask is a no-no. And Dr. Costanzo, take that off and put on the appropriate mask. Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Costanzo's mask had what's called a respirator valve on the outside of it. So when he breathes out, all of his germs are being shared with all of us. So that is not the correct mask to wear in any way, shape, or form. What he's putting on right now looks like a surgical mask is actually appropriate. It filters his germs as well as filtering germs coming into him. So that's really the way to go. The respirator masks are definitely not approved by the CDC or the state of Connecticut. That's a no-no.
Thank you. So now that we have an idea of what an appropriate mask is or might look like, the only person in all of our panelists so far that's wearing, was wearing a mask that was a no-no was Dr. Costanzo. Everybody else here is wearing an appropriate mask. Now, one of the things that you're gonna have to be very careful about is when you take your mask breaks, how you take off your mask is just as important as when you put it on. So Joanne is gonna demonstrate to you, first and foremost, how do you put your mask on? How you take your mask off? And then where do you place your mask when you take it off for your mask breaks? The floor is yours, Jo.
Okay, folks. The Dr. Estrella could not be more correct. The only way that the mask is effective and provides protection is if they're handled, if they're worn, if they're stored and disposed of properly. Cloth masks should be cleaned every day. They should be washed every day. So when you're here, we're using masks that have ear loops. I don't know if you, I'm pretty sure you can see them. What you want to do is hold your mask by the ear loop. You put it on over your face like this. If you noticed, I have not touched the outside of my mask. Before you do anything, the most important thing is you wash your hands. Wash your hands, keep that social distancing. You can use hand sanitizer, as Mrs. Gervage is holding up. Soap and water is actually the best, regular soap and water. It does not have to be antibacterial. Regular soap and water, washing your hands because the friction takes the germs off of your hands, okay? So we are providing everybody with a paper bag and you could put your name on it if you so choose to, so that would be at your desk so that you can store your mask. Because obviously, when you're eating, when you have a mask break, you're not gonna be wearing your mask. So the way we do that is make sure your hands are clean. Remove the mask through the ear loops. If you touch the outside of the mask, there's germs here, okay? So you remove it through the ear loops, just what I've done. So now, the inside of your mask has your germs in it. The outside is contaminated from the air and everybody you've been around with, sitting with. So what you want to do is turn that inside out. Whether you want to do it lengthwise, like this, that's acceptable, and put it inside of your bag, or you can fold it widthwise. Either way is correct. And you stick it inside of the bag. Very simple. Put it right in there. And this way, you have not contaminated your desk or the area all around you. Perform hand hygiene. That's always important. When you want to put it back on, you open the storage area that you have here. You hold it by your ear loops right here. Notice, I'm not picking it up and holding it like this, okay? So you want to put the inside of your mask back onto your face, the clean part where it was before, and put the ear loops over it. We're not gonna be wearing masks like this because all of my germs, it's an aerosol. COVID-19 is in the air. It's aerosol. So every time I breathe out, my germs are going everywhere. So if I have COVID, I'm spreading that all over the place. You don't want to wear it like this because, again, it's an aerosol. Comes out of your mouth as well. You don't want to have it hanging off the side. I mean, I see people everywhere wearing masks like this. This is one mitigating measure that everybody can do very easily. The other thing is you want to keep your hands away from your face. The way you get sick is put your hands to your nose, your mouth, your eyes. That's how the germs get into your body and breathing in and out. So if you're not touching your face, which is most important, that's why we tell you to keep your hands clean, even if you have gloves. You know, people that wear gloves may have a false sense of security because they've just touched everything in their area and they say, "Well, my hands are clean." Your hands are clean, but your gloves aren't. So it's the same thing. That's why it's so important to keep your hands clean and not everybody needs to wear gloves all the time either. So just keep in mind that you keep your hands clean, put the mask on correctly. Do not rub the outside. Don't use your mask as a slingshot. These have germs on them. And, you know, don't hang them up around, you know, everywhere. I've seen people hang them on the side of their computer. You really shouldn't be doing that because it's dirty. If the worst thing that happens that you don't have a place to put your mask, even though we're giving you a paper bag, put it on either a paper towel with the dirty side down, okay? And that would certainly suffice. And then throw that piece of paper or that paper towel away. Wash your hands.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Gervage to speak a little bit about the use of Plexiglas in some cases. Yvette, we can't hear you. You are mute.
I was just practicing taking off my face mask and showing the students that there are many different masks that may feel comfortable for them. And I would encourage them to try on a few if they can. If they're working with younger brothers or sisters that may not be comfortable, perhaps you want to take a mask and have the children put it on their stuffed animal to get them used to it. Now, there may be some children, a student, maybe one or two, in the school who may not be able to tolerate wearing a mask because of a severe medical condition. So students may see some alternatives that we want to show them. Their staff, their teachers, or a student may be wearing a face shield, which is not quite an alternative to a mask, but it does provide some additional protection. In addition, you may see staff or students working behind Plexiglas shields. In this picture, I have a large Plexiglas shield on a conference table. I'll be working with someone soon, sitting opposite me. I'm wearing my mask. The other person is wearing their mask. You'll see, I'm smiling at my workstation because I'm wearing the clear plastic mask. And this gives us some additional protection. Students may have this on their desks or you may see staff using it behind their workstation. So there's lots of mitigating factors. Joanne just shared the mask, the hand hygiene, the... Joanne just shared the mask, the hand hygiene, the physical distancing are the most important. But you may see some other things, like the plastic face shield or Plexiglas workstations. We're doing everything that we can to keep our community safe as we welcome you back to school.
Thank you. So, one of the things also that is gonna be crucial is how you wash your hands. And we have a mystery person that we're gonna have you kind of figure out who this person is. It's somebody that some of you in high school know. And this person is singing "Happy Birthday" to us to show us how many times we have to sing "Happy Birthday" to count twenty seconds of hand washing. Because it's gonna be really, really important that when you wash your hands, not only that you wash it, but that you spend twenty seconds doing it. So please watch this video so you get a sense of what twenty seconds looks like.
(singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you and anymore.
So that was twenty seconds of hand washing. And I think it's crucial for you to know that it's not only just about washing your hands, but how long you wash your hands to be able to kill the bacteria by disintegrating the proteins in the bacteria. Not in bacteria, excuse me, the virus, and bacteria too. But most importantly, it's going, I want you to guess for me, who you think that person singing was? So in the Q and A, if you could type up really quick, Ralph, can they do that?
Yeah, just type it as always a question, who they think it is.
Type it as it's a question. Who do you think that mystery person is washing their hands? Okay, I see some people might know who this person is. Kevin Hart, I don't know who Kevin Hart is. Uh-huh, very good. That was Principal Roberts. He did a phenomenal job of cleaning his hands for twenty seconds, and he has an incredible voice. So let's give him a virtual round of applause for demonstrating for us what twenty seconds of hand washing looks like. And we're hoping that as you transition into this new year, when you, every time you utilize the restroom, anytime you have an opportunity, either you use hand sanitizer or you wash your hands for a total of twenty seconds, because it's gonna be really important that you do so. Now I'm going to open it up for Q and A, so that you have an opportunity to ask some of your pressing questions. And I'm gonna have members of the team supporting us in answering these questions. But before we transition to that, I wanna give our board member, Diana Carpio, an opportunity to say hello to all of you. And I don't know if she has some questions she would like to ask us.
Hi, everyone. I'm so glad to see everybody on here and seeing all the students that are on here and paying attention and looking forward to the school reopening and having lots of questions. I myself do not have any question for you, Dr. Estrella, or your team. I've been following all your meetings and all the videos and listening to everyone. There are families out there that have asked some questions. Basically, the students are excited, they're ready to come back. Some of them are worried, but I think with all the information that's been given tonight and other nights, they feel very secure in coming back. I know there's a lot of questions regarding individual topics. However, I know we have a short time tonight, and with time, all those questions will be answered. And I look forward to seeing everyone around the schools. And if you see me out there, don't be afraid to come up and ask me anything.
Thank you. So I'm gonna turn it out to Brenda, so that Brenda can provide us with some of the questions that are being asked by our students. I know several have been answered already, but I wanna make sure we have an opportunity to answer additional questions.
Thank you, Dr. Estrella. There's a few people who are asking about orchestra and music programs. So if somebody could please address that, and also chorus as well, so.
So chorus will not happen in person. Any type of chorus will happen remotely because we need to ensure your safety. And in-person chorus puts us, puts you at significant risk because of the aerosols being projected as you're singing. In terms of bands, band will take place as well. But if you're playing an instrument, all instruments will be played outdoors. We will not have instrument playing inside the building for the same reason that we're gonna have choir, chorus or choir remotely because of the aerosol distribution and the risk that that creates for you in getting sick. So any instrument will be played outdoors. And those days that you have to be indoors, you're gonna be learning about band history, band theory, but you will not be, or utilizing digital tools to practice, but not necessarily playing the actual instrument inside the building.
Terrific. We did get a question similar to the middle school question about the gator style of masks. Dr. Costanzo, can you address that?
Sure. So the district at this point in time is only banning the mask that you saw me wearing a little bit earlier in the session, and that's the mask with the valves. Gators, we are not able to ban at this point because there isn't an official health position on it other than it's not the best, it's not the most effective or safe way to cover one's face, but it is better than no covering at all. So the district would prefer to see students coming to school wearing other masks, like the one that Brenda Williams is wearing now, or any of the other masks that you've seen on today's presentation, minus the one that I had on. A student will not be turned away for wearing a gator mask. But there isn't much positive evidence to suggest that gator masks are safe and effective. There are much more safe and effective ways to cover the face than through the gator mask. So we're not banning them, but we would encourage people to wear something safer.
Thank you.
Would you also be able to talk a little bit about lockers and backpacks?
Yes, that answer is a little bit easier. There is guidance from the CDC and other health department officials that believe that lockers are not, the use of lockers are not in the best interest of students at the present time. And that's just simply because lockers are adjacent to one another and students would be congregating around lockers. There's also a long tradition at the high school level in particular, students sharing lockers with friends when it's convenient, if a classroom is outside of a locker on a different floor. And we really wanna discourage the use of sharing lockers with other students and having people congregate outside of a row of lockers in order to obtain things. So lockers will be offline for the duration of the pandemic. And I'll defer to Sandra, if you'd like to speak, as you did with middle schools, about textbooks and other items that would be available in classrooms.
A little bit different than middle school is that you will be going from class to class. But I can tell you that the athletic directors have spoken to us at length about those of you guys that will be carrying equipment or anything that is heavy, and how they are working with each student to designate a space where you can actually leave some of your things. So I know that doesn't apply to everybody on this call, but you will be able to have your backpack and perhaps have a centralized area, maybe your advisory or somewhere, where if you needed to leave a textbook and come back for it, that you might be able to do that. We have Scott on this call. I don't know if that's been some thought that's been given to students leaving things in a certain classroom, but it's definitely something that we can talk about to your principals.
Thank you, Ms. Poyce. Can either you or Mr. Hurwitz or somebody else talk a little bit about how gym will operate this year?
If you'd like, I could address what we know about gym. So, different than what we're gonna do with other courses, students who are remote on a day of gym will actually be working with one teacher. And the reason for that is, you know, gym will be outside of the building. That's the only place that we're gonna be holding active gym classes. And a gym teacher can't take a laptop outside of the building and still connect to the network. So anything that's done outside of the building, when students are in-person, gym classes will be held outside. It will not be, you know, team sports, contact sports, it'll be more fitness, things of that nature. We have one of our gym teachers who was working on a curriculum to do walks around campus as a kind of a fitness activity. So, you know, in some cases, you know, gym will be active at school, but different than what it's been in the past. And for students who are at home, they'll be in like a workout of some sort that they will be doing at home while the students at school will be doing a different type of workout. And it's, you know, it's good, it's gonna, it's very like thoughtful work, but just, it's gonna be different, like a lot of things this year.
Mr. Hurwitz, can you also just address real quick what changes students can expect at lunch this year?
Where to start with that one? Okay, so, I mean, as was mentioned earlier, you know, there will be choices for lunch. There's gonna be some really interesting things. There will be pizza every day. There will be a Latin dish. There's gonna be a bento box. So students will have a choice, but everything's gonna be prepared in advance. So you're not gonna be standing prepared for you. Everything will be prepared in advance. You'll choose the item you want. At Bryan McMahon High School, we do have some eating areas set up in the cafeteria, but very limited. You know, kind of twenty-five students in each area. And then we also have eating areas set up throughout the building. So like the area just outside of the Learning Commons, there's desks out there. We also have all of our courtyards available for outdoor eating. So when the weather is right, students will be able to use the outside spaces. Lunch shifts are gonna be small, probably about, you know, at most two hundred students in any one lunch shift. That's gonna feel different. You know, and just kind of, I don't know, you know, I'm trying to think what else to tell you, but those are some of the key ways that it will be different this year.
Thank you. Dr. Estrella, there's a question about the online classes. And is that going to consist of us watching the class and doing the same work as the online students? Or is in-person and online doing the same or separate things?
So it's gonna be a synchronous approach. So online and in-person will be working on the same tasks. And they might be joining groups together, having conversations with one another. You might be in the classroom and you, with three students, and two students might be part of your group that are learning from home. So you're gonna have an opportunity, not only to engage with the kids that are in the classroom in person, but also with children that are remotely as well. So for example, if you are part of Cohort A, you could potentially have children that are working with you in-person as well as virtually, because those students decided to work, be in virtual, engage in virtual learning throughout the year. So you will see, you will see that in your classrooms, you will have a combination of activities that will not only have you and the group that's there in person, but also those that are remote as well.
And then do we have any further information about how after-school clubs will work or what will be available for high school students? Throw that out for anyone on the call.
I mean, I will say this, the intention is that for all clubs and other after-school activities to happen, I don't know the frequency, I don't know what the exact setup is going to be. I know athletics are going through some changes right now. And that's gonna be contingent on some decisions by the Health Department, the state. But, you know, so even athletics are practicing differently right now with smaller groups of students. I think there will be some similar differences, so to speak, for after-school activities as well. But we haven't really, we haven't really kind of put together a final plan for that.
And then we have a few people asking questions about how to make changes if they want to change what their selection is in terms of in-person to remote or remote to in-person. Dr. Estrella, perhaps for you?
Repeat the question again?
We have a few people asking what would they do if they want to change their selection? If they were, if they selected remote and now they wanna switch to hybrid or vice versa?
So that would be quite simple. The student will have their parents contact the school, and the school will work with their parents to make the shift from either in-person to remote or from remote to in-person.
And then we have a question about grading, since we did make a change in grading to pass/fail in some instances in the spring. The question is, are we going to continue grading in pass/fail at high school? Or are we going back to a more traditional system?
Well, we have a couple of things to consider. The board last year passed a policy that was related to concluding the last school year. And there were a number of different grading elements that got factored in at the elementary, middle, and high school level. The superintendent during the board retreat was granted some additional authority to make decisions related to policies, just like that. And those could be adjustments to any existing policies. So the short answer is, anybody that needs a letter grade for the purposes of applying to a school or a class rank can have one furnished upon request. The last policy that was passed in the spring of last year concerning grades did move the grading policy to a pass/fail status. But that may or may not ultimately be the grading policy that the superintendent, the board, and the policy committee believed to be the best grading policy for the 2021 school year. You have to remember, the policy that got passed at the end of the last school year applied really to a situation where we went to remote all at once, suddenly. There was a real learning curve for students and staff. And so all of that was taken into consideration when the grading policy was agreed to. And I would imagine that the superintendent and the policy committee will wanna take a closer look at this going into a new school year in this hybrid model to determine whether or not they wanna maintain that same policy or make some adjustments to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then maybe just one more question, because I know we're over time here. If a student is sick on the day that he or she is supposed to be in school, can that student take a class online for that day?
They could definitely log on online, yes. Well, I wanna thank everyone for joining us this evening in this conversation. I hope that this helps all of our high school students have a better sense of what to expect in this new academic school year. I know your principals will be providing more guidance and information, especially around your schedules as they become more finalized. Our goal is that by Thursday, everyone will have their schedule and access to Power School to acquire all the information that you need to be ready for Tuesday. I'm very excited to hopefully see all of you, and I'm looking forward to visiting the schools full of life, because I feel you are the life of our schools. So I'm really excited about having the opportunity to meet you for the first time, to have conversations with all of you. I'm even looking forward to some of the work specifically around equity that we're gonna be doing and sitting with you and having conversations. So make the best out of it. So make the best out of this year. There's a lot of things we're gonna learn. I know it's not gonna be easy, but you are resilient, and as a village, we will make this the best possible year for all of you, especially for our seniors. We're gonna try our very best to make this year memorable. Have a rest, a great rest of your week, and I look forward to seeing everybody Tuesday. Be well.